Testing one, two, three. This will be the March 16th, 2016 City Council Regular Meeting.
I'd like to call the order for regular meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach, March 16th, 2016, approximately 7:00 P.M. Please join me in a moment of silence and a pledge.
......................................................................................................... Moving on to Agenda Item Three, Presentation of a Proclamation Recognizing April 2nd and 3rd, 2016, as Relay for Life Paint the Town Purple Days. If you haven't noticed, if you come to City Hall, the staff has done an incredible job on this Relay for Life, so thank you for spearheading it. And this is an official proclamation of the City of Satellite Beach, whereas the American Cancer Society Relay for Life movement was founded by Dr. Gordon Classen Tacoma, Washington, in 1985, and is the world's largest fundraising event to end cancer, and whereas Relay for Life defends, unites more than 5,200 communities together to fight, act against this disease. Whereas Relay for Life does an activity that promotes cancer awareness, celebrates cancer survivors and caregivers, remembers loved ones lost to the disease, and empowers individuals and communities to fight back against cancer. And whereas money raised during Relay for Life, a South Bovard Beaches event supports the American Cancer Society's effort to help save lives from cancer by providing free information and support for people facing the disease today, educating people about how to reduce the risk of cancer or detect it early when it is the easiest to treat, and funding cancer research that will help protect future generations. And whereas the City of Satellite Beach is proud participant in this important endeavor to bring the community together to support all those who have been impacted by the disease, strive and aspire, and strengthen the cause through education, research, to find a cure to ensure the future for even visitors. The fight for a cure is a never-ending challenge that will one day save the lives of many people. Now therefore, I, Mayor, am the mayor of the City of Satellite Beach, Bovard County, Florida, and hereby proclaim April 2nd, 3rd, 2016, as Relay for Life Paint the Town Purple Day. Thank you very much for spearheading. Thank you.
Just real quick, and Mayor Cantino was very gracious to, you know, say that I was spearheading. I am the event chair for the Relay for Life that's going to happen at Satellite High School, but I really would be completely remiss if I didn't mention the efforts of Suzanne Sherman, who has been leading up the city-specific team, Diane from the fire department, and others, Julie Finch, everybody who has been just doing such great work in the fundraising. And this year, I think we have right now over 200 participants for Relay for Life. I think we have 34 teams, I believe, and this event most likely will be the largest Relay for Life event that we've had on the South Beaches in a long time. So our goal, fundraising goal is right at $50,000, and I actually believe that we are, when we started this time last year, I think we only had raised like maybe $9,000 to $10,000. I believe we're already over $20,000 total raised. So we should hit our fundraising goal for this year. And so, again, thank you for everybody, and that's from the city staff that's been helping. It actually makes me look good, and really, they're the ones doing the work. That's awesome. And now I know how you feel. And, uh, and thank you very much. Thanks, Jake. Appreciate it.
Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item Four of Citizens' Comments. This is for non-agenda items. Floor is open. Hearing none. Moving on to Item Number Five, City Council Comments.
Thanks, Mayor. I obviously won't go through the whole longer list of things that have happened in the last two weeks since our last meeting, because there have been events all over the place, all of them great, no less. I did go, though, to the beach cleanup with Ethan that he had, and, you know, I get more and more people introduced to that, and I have a lot more people that didn't know about it that like to show up there. And I think everybody is in the same amazement as we all are of how well Ethan is dedicated to show up there every single month and carry that on. And I'm telling you, it's needed, it's great work, it has great results. But like I said, I've encouraged a lot of people to come, and it's like we have a regular posse now that seems to show up to do that. So it's a great thing that he does. I'm glad that, you know, we've recognized him before, because it is something, I use that beach area, so I like doing it there, because I know I'm going to be there, but I think a lot of people come down here just specifically because Ethan's running the show down there. So it is a really great thing. I'm really happy to be there, and I'm really glad that we always go out there and support him for that.
I attended the Florida League of Cities meeting on Monday night, and Dr. Duane DeFries was the featured speaker that night, talked about the Indian River Lagoon and the coalition of different municipalities, counties, that are working on addressing the issue. So it was a pretty neat, pretty neat evening, and a great presentation, and it's going to be a lot of work. It's going to take years. That's it.
Thank you. I attended the, I was the speaker for the Lions Club last night, and originally, an interesting organization. They do an incredible amount in the city, not only with pancake breakfast, but the big truck, the car shows they're doing, and for a fairly small group of individuals there now. But I think I'm true in saying this, it's, they're the longest, the oldest-running organization in the city. So I asked them a question, because I knew it was really close. They're as old as the city. They started then, and they're still going. They're looking for membership drives. Great organization, does a lot. So, you know, and they have a cookout on March 29th, and hopefully before, we'll be able to give you the date on that. And they donate all their funds, and a great, great organization. So that's all that. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Satellite Beach Beautification Board Plant Sale will be this Saturday, March 19th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00, at the Schecter Community Center parking lot. All the funds that are raised in that plant sale go to improvements to our doggy waste stations installed along Cassia, things like that. Those are the types of projects that they fund for the city. So it all goes right back into the city, so it's neat that our volunteers do that for us. We also have Project Graduation Casino Night that'll be held on the same night, March 19th, at the Schecter Center, with casino-style games, music, food and drinks, and a silent auction, and this is for adults only, 20 years and up. And it's $25 per person, and this will benefit again Project Graduation. The Flashlight Easter Egg Hunt will be held on March 24th at the Minnesota Soccer Field at 8:45 at night, 8:45 p.m. Children, first grade through sixth grade, will be able to hunt eggs unassisted with their flashlights. And the cost for this is $7 per child, and tickets can be purchased at our Recreation Department over at the Schecter Center. And then, last but not least, we have the Breakfast with the Easter Bunny. This is a wildly popular event. If you ever go to Pelican Beach Park for any other reason during this time, don't, because there's kids everywhere, eggs are everywhere. And this is on March 26th at 10:00 a.m. And this is for everyone, kids all age, and they have them separated out, the hunts separated out for each kid age group. And this, the cost of $7 per child and tickets can, again, can be purchased over, is it sold out? Yeah, it's sold out. So this is actually a warning. If you don't have children, you're not going to go, don't go to Pelican Beach Park at this time. For informational items, I wanted to let you know that we did have an email from Nancy Flickinger. She's our account manager with FPL, and we are getting our fourth rate reduction this year. It'll be applicable through 2016, but then I just got an email yesterday from FPL letting us know that they've turned in their rate increase plan for the next couple of years. So, um, so it'll, you know, I don't think it's going to go up much, but the decreases did equate to about a 7 percent decrease overall, particularly for business customers. And that was all from the plant conversions to natural gas. I received a thank you letter for our fire department. That's in your packet. I also received a thank you letter for Public Works, and another thank you letter for our police department school resource officer, and that letter was very detailed. It was a really nice letter. You can tell the passion that our resource officer has for the school just by reading that letter. Before I let Alan come up here, I wanted to let you know that I, you know, I serve on the Tourism Development Council's Beach Committee. I was appointed by Commissioner Robin Fisher for that committee. He's coming off the commission, so I thought that, you know, at that time I wouldn't be on the committee anymore. But then Commissioner Barfield just appointed me to the, back to the, to the Beach Committee. So I'll still be serving on that committee. And that committee guides all of our beach re-nourishment projects for the county. I did want to mention also that our Relay for Life team has, just the city team, our, that through our little events that we had, like our cornhole competition and our little bake sales that we're having, penny wars, we haven't counted those yet, but our rec department is really probably going to win that. Things like that. We have so far raised $2,672, and we are the top team right now in this area for Relay for Life, so that's pretty neat. This year, I think it's, was the big difference for this year was the new City Hall staff. They just really embraced us and went with it, and so it was kind of exciting to have that breadth of energy in this project. And that's it. So I'll let Alan come up here and give you an update on our road projects.
All these microphones, I feel like I'm Donald Trump. Well, the hair looks a little like it, but...
Wait a minute, I don't have the comb over yet. And just for informational purposes, I think that's a tri-tip barbecue on the 29th at Pelican Beach Park at 6 o'clock. Yeah, okay. Perfect. He's been trying to push tickets on us, so that's why I'm doing that. I'm here to give you an update on our road projects, the resurfacing, and the Roosevelt project, and a little bit of an update on Shell Street. So the resurfacing, we've completed Ocean Drive, Atlantic Drive, Palm Drive, Hibiscus Drive, Pointcetta Drive, Verbena Drive. Those, all of those streets have street ends that ended into the old Satellite Avenue, and there were, at one time, bollards and trees that were blocking the ends of those streets off. Well, we've removed all those and made what they call T-turnaround, so that larger vehicles like trash trucks and fire vehicles can go down and turn around without having to back out of the street, which makes it much safer. You know, personal vehicles can go down there and turn around if they make a wrong turn or something without having to hit somebody's personal driveway, so that makes it much nicer. Those are completed with the exception of the signage. Right now, we have some water-filled barricades up so that folks don't, you know, drive through the fence at Marte, now, is it Martesia? The housing development that's there, anyway. And so, but those streets have been completed, they're paved, look great, ride great, everything's gone well. We've also completed Palmetto Avenue Sunrise, Magellan, and Cale Street between Norwood and Sherwood. Any of the stormwater work that we were going to do associated with the Ocean, Atlantic, Palm, Hibiscus, Pointcetta, those, that has been completed as well. So everything in that area has been taken care of, with the exception of the street end signage, and the reason they haven't gotten on that is the crew has moved on to Ocean Spray and Hedge Cock, and I think into the fountains to do the curb repair before they go out and mill those roads. Ocean Spray will be the next road to be milled and resurfaced, and that'll occur between Laurel and Temple. That's a long time coming. That street's been resurfaced many times without the milling procedure, so that'll be, you know, like I said, it's a long time coming, and it'll look really nice when it's done. So that should occur within the next two weeks. Through this whole process, we've tried, and I, and I think we've been pretty successful in keeping the residents aware of what's going on. Robert is out there splitting, trying to split himself between the two projects, and he comes in my office daily. "I need a letter. I need a letter." And I'm writing letters so that he can walk around, and his little pedometer, I think, broke a long time ago. We have a contest going in the city now that, for putting, how many steps you can, you can take. I think Robert broke the record, so. But anyway, we're doing our best at keeping folks informed. We also have a website. It's SPPWprojects at SatelliteBeach.org. We try to get as many folks on that email blast as possible. If someone calls, we give them that address, so that anything, any information in the future, we can put out to them via that. We also have our Facebook page that we put out information on, the City Manager's Facebook page, we put information out, and the city website. So we're doing the best we can as far as trying to make sure that people know what's going on, and I think we're being, we're very successful at that, because we're not getting a huge number of phone calls. We get a couple, just concerned phone calls, and pretty much, I think, people are happy to see what's being done, and they are patient with us and, you know, cooperating with us when we ask them to move their vehicles and things like that. So I think it's all working well. Roosevelt Avenue, all of the stormwater pipe work has been done. We did some cross-street pipe work from the north side to the south side. That's all been accomplished. The south-side pedway is about 90 percent complete. We have some tie-ins to do. There's a couple of trees that need to be removed. We're giving the resident every opportunity to get those removed. He's actually talked to someone about selling the trees, but the gentleman that's buying the trees has a problem with his transport vehicle. So, again, Robert, our superstar, he's, he's, he's trying to coordinate all of this, you know, and hopefully, we'll get it accomplished. If we can't, then we'll have to move the trees, but I'm hoping that we can get that done before we absolutely have to be there. The sidewalk on the north side is about 65 percent complete. It looks nice. It's a, it's a meandering sidewalk, much like the one that we have on Cassia. It adds character. We're not being too intrusive to the residents. I can tell, because we're not getting a whole lot of phone calls. And I think once the project is done, folks will really like it, because it'll add character to the road. We are anticipating the road construction itself to begin on Monday. The city engineer and I, and Robert will be meeting with the contractor on Friday to go over the procedure and make sure that, you know, if there's any issues, that we stop and we look at what's going on, because what they're going to do is they're going to put it into a crusher, and they're just going to pull the crusher along, crush it in place, put it right back on the road, and the base will, that concrete that's there will become the base, and they'll roll it behind there, so the road will be usable as soon as they pass those homes. So hopefully, it works out well, and, you know, I've got every hope that, you know, we're not, we're not going to be shaking anybody up too, too bad. But as we told residents at our community meeting, and I've tried to reiterate it throughout this process, it's going to be a little inconvenient, it's going to be a little loud, and it's going to be very dusty, even though this truck that's going to crush the concrete has water on it, so it'll, it'll knock down a lot of that dust. You know, it'll still, it'll be a little painful for a little while, but it, you know, for the, for the long-term good that it's going to, it's going to do, I think it'll be worth it. The, and the only other thing that I wanted to update you on was the Shell Street project. For all intensive purposes, the Shell Street project has been completed. There are some issues that we have to tighten up with the contractor. They have not received final payment and will not receive final payment until these issues are dealt with. But we have looked at lighting for that area. I've been able to locate some bollard lighting that is turtle-safe, FWC and FDEP-approved. I'm still in the vetting process, but I think it's going to be a real win-win for us, because it'll make, it'll enhance the area. It will allow the neighbors to feel safer, because it is pretty dark out there, and it'll, you know, give light to that walkway that's there, especially when it gets, you know, in the wintertime, when it gets lighter or darker earlier, it makes a big difference. So as soon as that is done and the vetting process is complete, we'll come back to you for your approval, and we'll move forward with that, hopefully.
We're also looking at solar.
Yes, and the bollards are solar bollards with LED lighting, no electricity involved whatsoever, so that's a big, that's a big plus as well.
I'd like to see if we can't get FPL to come out and put it...
Well, let's not even talk about FPL. But yes, I think the biggest part of it, they're solar, they are fairly inexpensive for the type of light they are. You know, we put the bollards in at Pelican and at Hightower, and we had started having problems with them just because they are electric and you have corrosion issues and things like that. But this company has dealt with Fort Lauderdale, St. Pete Beach, Melbourne Beach, and there are bollards in place, so like I said, I'm going through the vetting process. We'll call as many of these folks as I can get ahold of to find out if they have any issues. Also, Kennedy Space Center is looking at putting up some, some of these products up there, too. So I think that if, you know, they're, they're that well-known, and in looking at the FWC website, there were three companies that were recommended, and this one was on the top, so.
Roosevelt.
Yes, sir.
Just from my eyes, it seems like they're, they're pretty good at what they're doing. Seems to be moving along at a pretty good speed. I see them doing that sidewalk, and amazed by how much they get done, and how much, how little impact it seems to have there. Is that your impression with these?
Yeah, they are moving very quickly, and the folks that I speak with that are, that live along Roosevelt there, they're impressed as well, at the speed at which these folks are moving. You know, we've had a couple of issues irrigation-wise and things like that, but for the most part, everyone seems to be happy with, you know, with the crews. They are very attentive to, you know, residents' concerns, and, you know, Robert's out there 90 percent of the time with them, so if there's any issues that need to be resolved, I mean, we're going to have a couple, you know, where there are pavers and we have to go across and keep them with ADA requirements. We're going to have, you know, questions, but like I said, for the most part, I think it's, it's going rather smoothly compared to other projects we've done.
I rode my bike down Roosevelt today, this morning, and, you know, I think I outrode Frank's comments. I mean, just from looking at it, most people haven't been able to travel down it, because portions of it are closed, and unless you live down there, you're really not seeing what's going on. But the sidewalk looks great. I think the concerns that people had that the sidewalk was going to intrude into their property, you know, it really came out wonderful, the way it meanders down the north side, and it really makes the homes look better. So, I mean, I think we're on the right track. We're starting paving on Monday. What is the anticipated end?
The, well, the anticipated, probably June, late June, would be the, the end of the project. Hopefully, we don't have any big weather delays or anything like that. We have given them a couple extra days, because we did have some rain, you know, some rain delays in there, but for the most part, we're on track, we're on schedule. The schedule is on the website, on our Facebook page, and also on the email blast. We emailed that out to everyone, so that, we're, we're pretty much on track with the schedule.
You haven't gotten many calls, and I don't think any of us have got any, so that's always a good thing.
Are they going to put the road bed totally down first and then come back and pave it at that time?
Yes. Well, I, I think they're going to move section by section, but the, I think the smartest thing to do is to get your road base down, make sure you have your proper compaction, and then just pave it and do a pole all at the same time, you know? So that way, you don't have joints, section by section.
Thank you. Further questions? Thanks, Alan.
All right, thank you. I have, I have a link for Courtney. You know, last year, we did the community meetings that we talked, you know, with our residents about, are we going to look at, you know, when we are going to be...
We were thinking May. How, how are you all on that? Is that okay?
May is good for me.
Yeah, I think, you know, starting around that time would actually be good. The only, the nice point is, you know, last year, we talked about repaving roads, and we really talked about all these projects. It would be really nice that we finished some of these projects, so when we go back and have the community meetings, we can, number one, say, "Okay, we told you last year, we promised we were going to do this, we did this. How do you feel about it? Did you get what you expected? Are you happy with it?" You know, so we can get some good feedback on it. So, you know, if we kind of get two, two started here, then we're still right in the middle of the projects. It would be nice, like I said, to kind of get some of these projects finished and out of the way, and really get the, the feedback from the residents on, how did it turn out? Did you get what you were expecting? And, and, you know, what are, what things do they see now that we should go forward with? So I think that is a good idea, and it's probably really good timing.
So, may I ask further?
Just may I? Okay. And are the locations okay with you all? The same locations that we had last month?
Any further questions?
Would you like to talk about the content later, closer to the, closer to the meetings?
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Hearing none. Moving on to Agenda Item Seven, Discuss Take Action on Recreation Department Purchase of Skateboard Park Rams.
How are y'all? We are, we are moving forward on our skate park renovations. For those of you who have been to the skate park before, we also have, in addition to the cement skate park, we have quite a few wooden elements out there. The wooden elements are quasi-portable. The kids move them around. Let me get enough kids to pick them up and carry them. But most of those are in need of repair. We thought if we repaired those, it would kind of give a little boost to the skate park, get everybody energized for the upcoming big renovations, and the money would not go to waste, because the wooden elements that we'd be repairing would stay with the park. So Matt Price was one of our original skate guards, back when we opened in 98, and he also is the lead on all of our big repairs like this. He also went on to be a nurse. He's at Homes Regional. So interesting. He has come up with a list of items, and the total amount would be about $4,000. Most of that is in the product called Skate Light, which is the top wood surface that is, works real well outside, doesn't deteriorate in the elements.
Questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the repair of the skate park wooden ramps not to exceed $4,000 to come from the skate park trust fund. Second?
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Blimer. Further discussion?
Yeah.
This time, open up for... At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 7. Here and none, bring it back to council, any further? No more?
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmar?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cattina?
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Can we change your mind?
No, sir.
I'll bring your English book back. Karen, thank you very much. At this time, with permission from council, I'd like to move Agenda Item 9.
I'd be fine.
Okay, fine, thank you. Presentation by Bard County Agriculture Agent Joe Walter on chickens. Joe, please come forward. Let me sit here if it's more comfortable to you.
Where? I'm used to standing, but that's it. First of all, I want to make it very clear that I'm here as an educator, not as an advocate, and that's real important for us at the university is to make sure that we're not advocating for one thing or another, we're strictly here to give factual information. To clear up a couple of other things, it was previously in the email I received, is I am an educator, and yes, I do, I have been in the poultry business both in the large-scale and small-scale, and I am on a national group called E-Extension for Small Foxes. So I've dealt in this at quite depth. As a matter of fact, I just yesterday answered three emails from international, so I think I can speak factually about the subject. I did not bring a big presentation, I didn't figure you wanted to be here till 3:00 or 4:00 tomorrow morning, that probably if I answer your questions, that might serve you better than if I make a big presentation. I understand that a lot of the ordinance that you had looked at before kind of copied Rockledge's ordinance, and I did testify in front of Rockledge City Commission on the same subject. Then one of the things that I'll tell you that in some of the other, particularly in Rockledge I can remember is they, one of the commissioners had made the statement that he did not want to deprive the lower economic class, the ability to feed their families. Let me make one thing crystal clear, this is not an economic thing. The people that are going to do this are those who are going to be more well-off and well-educated than those that aren't. If you think that you're gonna raise some backyard chickens and save money at the grocery store by doing it, I got news for you, it is not going to happen. The only way that the poultry industry is able to do that is because they buy their feed in box cars, multiple box cars a day. And by buying in large volumes, you've got the economy of scale, which makes it feasible. I know there's a couple of people here tonight that have tried to pick my brain over the last several years, and they, we started a 4H coop at Wickham Park, and I think they found that I wasn't completely naive about the cost of the project. It was gonna cost them money, it was not gonna save them money. So that out of the way, I'm open up for questions from the council.
Question, let me ask this, trends. You were telling me that larger cities, St. Louis, something you mentioned.
St. Louis, Chicago, Orlando, Winter Park, St. Petersburg, Clearwater, I believe all of those have adopted some type of a small flock, backyard flock ordinance over the last 10 years or so. It is a growing trend across the United States. Why is it? Well, I think there's a number of reasons. People like to have pets. Well, why not have a pet that's gonna return something to you, rather than a pet that's gonna be nothing to cost you money? If you compared parrots, cockatiels, any of those exotic birds to layer hens in your backyard, I would guarantee you the chicken is the quietest. The chicken is probably the cleanest. So if that kind of answers your question.
Let me ask this one other woman, and I'll open it up. Does chickens in people's backyard cause any migration of other type of animals to cause any problems?
I think I know where you're going with that, and if you think that that's gonna bring the coyotes in any more than what they're already here, probably not. It's a fact, coyotes like chicken, foxes like chicken, cats like chicken, dogs like chicken.
Ossoms.
Ossoms like chicken, raccoon like chicken. I mean, it's all part of the ecology, part of the food cycle. So they're not gonna bring, pardon?
Dave likes chicken.
Oh, you like them from Kentucky Fried Chicken. I like chicken that way too. So, no, as far as drawing in, not so. As long as it's handled properly. Now, if you take and you have a free-range, quote-unquote, free-range chicken, which is something that the poultry industry wouldn't, couldn't survive on, because if you have them free-range, then the hawks, the eagles, the owls, they all like chicken too, and they don't like it cooked.
Questions?
I just, since a lot of people are starting this, is there anything, I mean, what would be the negatives or the cons, or what have, is there anything that communities that didn't expect to happen, happened, or, I mean, you know, is there a downside to any of this?
All right, you asked two separate questions here, and I'll start with the first. Is there anything that wasn't, was not expected? Not that I know of. The second question was, is there any downsides at all? And what can be expected? Yeah, you can have one neighbor that doesn't like the next neighbor that's gonna complain. But they're gonna complain whether you put a different color paint on your fence.
Right.
Or your dog didn't get, got out of its kennel or something, you know? So those kinds of things, yes, you can expect that to happen.
But probably no more than any other pet.
But no more than any other pet. Have you ever been in a neighborhood that's had cockatiels?
Yeah.
Oh, parrots? Yeah, I mean, you know, they're extremely noisy, yeah, dogs. So as far as the noise factor and all, I don't think that you will have that, as long as your ordinance does not allow male chickens. Male chickens do crow early in the morning, or for some of you, it may be late at night. 3:00 is early in the morning for me, but some people it may be late. So that would be one thing that most municipal ordinances have excluded male chickens because of the noise factor, okay? A lot of them will have housing requirements, and some, in some ordinances, they will require an inspection of the housing ordinance to make, or the house, the coop, to make sure that it meets whatever standards they might have that would protect those birds as well as prevent the inevitable escape if they weren't fixed correctly. Let's see, other than that, maybe one minor downside could be if people don't keep the feed in a metal container, then it's just like being in San Diego with black bears. Other animals are gonna find the feed, and that could be animals with short tails or animals with long tails. So rodent control is something that needs to be considered. So that's the downsides as I know it.
Could I just follow up on one thing when you were talking about that? In your opinion, have municipalities talked about minimum requirements for housing of them? Or should that happen? In your opinion, do you think you should do that? And I'll tell you where I'm going from this. I am actual, I'm a licensed breeder through agriculture and through FWC for birds. Generally, I do finches and stuff, which I know by them, they have cage requirements, size requirements, and you have to list those type items, you have to send pictures and stuff like that. So if you do that, whether it's birds or reptiles or whatever, there is a minimum housing requirement that they actually put out there. Not that I've ever known them to come check, but like I said, in your opinion, do you think that is a recommendation? So that's something a municipality should put out there, or do you find that that's not really a problem?
For the most part, I don't think that's a big problem. Most people will have more space allowed for the birds than what the birds' requirements are. We do have, and you can pick it up off my website, we have minimum require, we have minimum requirements for space, for square footage, we have minimum requirements for feeder space, for water space, we have all those kinds of things that are readily available to people. In my experience, then, most people who are novices at, well, you know, they'll drop a nickel and call. Sometimes even go to the website, but depends on which age group they are. My age group, I call. Some of these younger people, their age group, they're gonna go to the website first.
Right.
You know, I mean, that's just the way it is. In several other cities that I'm aware of, I actually live over to the west of here in Orange County, and a couple of different municipalities over there went so far as doing a trial program per year. They had absolutely zero complaints. So it did, they become, you know, permanent ordinance. And most places that I have heard of have done exactly that. It's become, if they did do a trial at all, it became permanent because people don't care. It's the old, kind of the old thing of out of sight, out of mind. I don't know whether I should say this or not, but if you went around and did inventory in the city, if you had your little drone and went around, you might be surprised how many chickens are in the city already. Now, I was asked earlier, well, why do we even need an ordinance for them? Why are we even bringing it up? Well, it's only because in most places where zoning laws went into effect, farm animals were excluded from residential zonings. I look at chickens as farm animals. I'm a farmer.
Where are you all at? Stand up, the ones that are in the coop in Wickham. These are city folks that either live in your city or next door, and they don't see them quite as farm animals. I'm still working on that. They look at them as pets.
They don't name.
Yeah, and Joe doesn't name his animals, does he?
Dinner. Barbecue.
So, you know, it kind, it all depends on how you look at it. If you're looking at something, and you've got four, five, six animals, they're pets, yeah, you can name those, and it's a whole different thing than if you've got livestock and you've got hundreds or thousands of them.
Right.
But you're not talking about that. You're talking about really something that's gonna be a pet that's gonna give something back.
Okay, thank you.
I have nothing. I wanted to get back to the rodent issue. You know, I mean, for those of us that have lived here, I mean, I've lived in three different places in Satellite Beach, and there are rats here. I mean, they're here, they're at the beachside, they're all over. The scenarios that play out in people's backyard with feed may not necessarily affect the people that have the coops. It may be their neighbors that ultimately end up with a rodent problem because they're eventually going to go somewhere to find an easy place to live when they know they have a food source close by. How does that?
Well, as I think, I think I stated, rodent control has to be part of your plan, of each individual.
What if you're the neighbor?
You know, the little black boxes, the rodent control boxes? Well, let me finish. I understand your concern, but there's two things on that. One is the individual who has the animals, you know, a simple rodent control box that you put the baits in usually takes care of that. If you keep that out, your rodents are pretty well gone. The other thing is, is those rodents are gonna find a place close to their food source, real close. They don't travel distances. It's kind of like mosquitoes. We've got some mosquitoes, you know, that don't move more than 100 yards. We have other mosquitoes that'll go 20 miles. It all depends on which ones you have. And I'd love to get into, we'll talk about mosquitoes, container mosquitoes tonight, and the Zika virus and all that, but this is not the time to do that. By the way, those are the ones that breed in your house or close by around your house.
Well, I know, you know, we brought this up at the last meeting, I was pretty vocal about, you know, if people wanted to be able to do this, I was, didn't really have a problem with it, but I can tell you, I've gotten a lot of different input from people that have called me, real estate people, real estate agents, that basically said something to the effect that, you know, it would affect property values in certain areas. Also, there were comments that were, that basically, you know, I like my neighbor, I know they have chickens, but I wouldn't really say anything because I don't want to get them in trouble, but I really don't like it, but I just want to be a good neighbor and I don't want them not to like me. So, you know, we're here to make decisions for 10,000 people, you know, and that's the way I have to look at it. I mean, I think it's a, I mean, I think from the perspective of wanting to be able to have that, I think it's a great idea, but we have to make decisions here for a lot of people, not just a small group of people that want something in an upscale beachside community, that that's where people are moving, is to an upscale beachside community, not expecting farm animals.
Well, let me, let me just pose a question to you, food for thought. Do you have a cat ordinance?
I don't have a cat.
No? Do you have a cat ordinance in the city?
No, we have feral cats here.
We have feral cats. There's a lot of people who don't like cats, there's a lot of people who are allergic to cats. Cats are one of the animals that we have normally use as pets that carry a lot of disease.
I'm just telling you.
So there's.
I was in favor of this, the last meeting, and I'm telling you, I've gotten calls from people, and these are their concerns, they're honest concerns, and we have to listen to them.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm just.
You know, we just, we just went through a situation over in East Orange County, it has nothing to do with this ordinance, but it's an example of how people ask questions and get very passionate about things. They were putting a new K-8 school in. The school had been on the books for like 20 or 30 years. You may have heard it on TV, I don't know. Man, people, you had, you go into a hearing, big meeting, you know, hundreds of people there, and it was like, they better check all the weapons at the door because they were that passionate. One group wanted it, the other group didn't want it. And the argument came up that it's gonna decrease land values, the housing values. And I just happen to know one couple that actually had the property right next to the school, probably the ones that would be most impacted, and they said, by gosh, if they would build that school, we're leaving. They did, they left. They doubled their money on their house, they'd only been there a year. But by gosh, all the real estate people were saying, oh, it's gonna drop property values.
One question. I also have people calling, I have had no one who thinks this is a major issue. And I've talked to quite a few people in town on it, and I am not getting that feeling myself. But Joe, if you would, for us, please, would you stay there? Because we're gonna, I'm gonna open up for public comment, and there might be some questions that we might want to direct to you.
Sure. And once again, understand, I'm here to ask your questions, and I'm not an advocate one way or the other on this.
The only thing I'm asked, I would like to do is facts. You know, you're the man that is the expert on this, we brought you in. That's what, I don't need really an opinion. We're gonna get a lot of them, I'm sure, between.
We're going to get a lot of them, I'm sure, between now and when we have the resolution. And I'd also like John and Courtney to get with you, if it's okay with council, that when we do have this resolution, it might be good to have Joe here, or at least be able to have these facts that you're telling us, because that's what we really need to base our decisions on. At this time, I'll open up public comment on this agenda item.
The chickens there, please?
Nope.
Okay. Start off with, I applaud council and city manager for taking this issue up and trying to make our citizens happy in Satellite Beach, which has always been this council. That being said, I am against this ordinance, primarily because I feel like we're getting a camel's nose into the tent. Because next thing you know, if somebody is going to want ducks for pets, and I don't think they're probably any worse than chicken, other than they, you know, have duck meat, and that's kind of fattening. And after that, somebody wants these little cute little horses that are probably half the size or dimension. I just don't feel that our bedroom community needs to become a farming community. And I understand it's only four chickens per house, as long as we check it, but then you're putting another burden on inspectors, which are kind of stressed out anyway. I think that we need to reexamine this. I don't listen to the gentleman, I don't foresee it a health issue, other than what Dominique brought up, excuse me, Councilman Johnson brought up, with the rats. That worries the heck out of me. And the reason is, I had a house open for a long time that was up for sale next door to me, and I saw rats going up on the roof, going into their, I don't know, some kind of exhaust system, and going down into the house. Didn't make me happy. That place didn't have any chickens or anything, but we know there's rats in Satellite Beach, and that worried the dickens out of me. I mean, as a personal thing, you know, I went to Beef O' Grays the other day, it was good, good stuff. But like I said, I just, I'm just not in favor of this ordinance because I just feel like we're getting a camel's nose into the tent, and we are going to have some problems down the road. Thank you.
Hello. Thanks for having all of us here. My name is Erica Mayer, and I'm a teacher at Surfside Elementary, and I'm also a 4H leader, and brought some of my 4H kids along. We have, we do have a coop over at Wickham Park, so we have quite a bit of experience with having chickens right near city. And there's coyotes around there. Never had a problem, never had a coyote get a chicken. There's rats in the park, I'm sure, but never had a rat problem because we take care of our feed, the way Mr. Doe tells us to. He tells us a lot of stuff, but we still name our chickens, so. But what I want to talk about is from an educator's standpoint. We have kids every day, and we try to get them excited at school about science and about the life cycle and about ecology. And one way to do it for sure, it's with live animals. We have never seen kids as excited as when they hatch chickens in a classroom. And there's a baby chick. You put an egg in an incubator, and 21 days later, there's a baby chick, and kids get excited. And we have our kids participate in 4H. We keep our chickens out at Wickham Park, and they get to take care of them a couple times a month, but if they had them in the backyard, the things they could learn, the things that they would be excited about, it would be phenomenal. There's a lot of people who would love to have chickens in their backyard just for the kids' sake. It's an amazing pet. They get to see everything from the time that they're little till the time they lay eggs, and they get really involved. So from an educator's standpoint, I would say I would love it if we could have chickens in Satellite Beach, just for that reason. So I did want to invite you to our 4H fair, if you want to come out and see kids and how excited they get about chickens and how much they learn. Here's our invitation.
Thank you so much.
We have our fair next month out at Wickham Park, and you can see our Wickham Park coop, and you can come to the fair, and the kids do a great presentation with the chickens. And if anybody needs any questions as far as embryology goes, I'd be happy to help out.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Public comments still open.
John Ferguson, 135 Maple. I didn't expect to say anything, but it got me to thinking. I wasn't aware there was a coop at Wickham Park. And if for any reason council decides backyard chickens is a bad idea, I think I've heard two things so far. Number one, try it on for a year and see if it fits. Number two, you know, we've talked about doing community gardening stuff in the sustainability board. Instead of folks having to travel to Wickham Park, if you can't do backyard chickens, maybe that's something that could be done in the city someplace on city land. That's thinking purpose, I'm trying to figure how you finesse this. And for one thing, if you did that for a while and there aren't any problems, then that may make it easier to have backyard chickens. I don't know. The other thing I would ask, and I don't know who would answer, are rabbits farm animals or pets? Because that's another, I, when I grew up, rabbits was a big 4H thing, you know, so if you think, and 4H is not a rural activity, okay? So, you know, you might want to think about what other animals are involved in 4H. Rabbits, I think, would be one. I'm sure somebody will come up with something else. I can kind of see Gabe's concerns about progression. When I mentioned in my wife about chickens, I don't think it was five minutes she came back and asked about pot bellied pigs. Not that that's in our agenda, but that's what threw somebody else's mind. So, yeah, this is something you need to think about, and I was just trying to say, maybe there's some other things you can do to, instead of just the yes or no, there's a kind of halfway in somewhere.
Comment, horse is still open.
Hi, Sarah Leach Shaw, 465 Harwood. Along with the gentleman was just saying, I'm from this area, graduated from Satellite in '99, moved up to Northern Virginia for a while due to job purposes into the Western Virginia area. What you were just talking about, the sustainability, so I don't usually talk about it, I'm a little nervous. Up there, that's exactly what they do. It's co-op gardens, it's co-op poultry. Everyone in the city, you want to be a part of it, they have these plots, everyone joins in, you put your money and you put your time into it. And it's also, I'm sorry, very nervous. But once again, it also makes revenue back into the city based on that. Not only that, it's a beautification process. There's these beautiful fields that are just covered with everyone's plots that they do vegetables, they do flowers on, but it's for a lot of people who are in smaller areas, townhomes, condos, but they still want that. And you can put that on city land. And the same thing with the chickens, they did the same thing up there. People bought into coops. And you put in your coop fees, you put in your money, you put in your time, what you get out of it is the eggs, the education for your children, and just a sense of well-being in the community, of chipping in together. So there is that factor of it too, maybe not starting it out at people's homes, but bringing it closer to Satellite Beach. We're part of the Wickham Park coop, we love it. It would be awesome, though, if we could bring it into this community and expand it to other children within this area, within other schools, not just the kids at Surfside. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Floor is still open for public comment.
Diane Douglas, 525 Holly Drive. Chickens, is there a smell to those?
No.
Excuse me. There. All right, if there's a smell. You can have a smell to chickens if you let the manure build up, like if you have a caged chicken. You know how rabbits, if you let, put a rabbit coop, and you let all the manure fill, build up underneath it? And then it gets wet, and you let it get wet and start mineralize, then you can get an odor. But under normal circumstances, you do not have any.
So, so what's the timeframe on that?
What's the timeframe on?
Yeah, like how long would the build up be?
Well, it depends on how, I mean.
How many chickens you have.
It depends how many chickens you have.
Right, but.
If, I mean, if you keep, if you clean out your, if you have a small coop and you keep it cleaned up, there is no, there is none. And if I can address that coop business just a little bit, there are people who have coops that spent $10 on a coop, and there are coops that people spend $10,000 on, and they're none bigger than the whole six chickens. The chicken coop, backyard chicken condo businesses has become quite a business.
Okay, and then that's the space requirement. So if you had a duck, it would require a certain amount of space then also?
Ducks?
Or a pot bellied pig would require such amount of space. So when you're looking at the pony, you would require such amount of space also. No, yes?
Well, let's start one, one at a time. Ducks are something else. Ducks are dirty. And the reason that ducks are dirty is ducks are filter feeders. They, they filter large quantities of water in order to get their feed, and that goes right through them. And so ducks, if you have a, if you have a sidewalk or something, you've got ducks running around, it's usually pretty nasty. So I know people at Wickham Park didn't believe me about ducks being a problem, but I think they've learned that, haven't they?
They're not a problem.
They're filter feeders, and so consequently. Pigs are yet another animal. And, I mean, I've raised pigs, and my wife says, we're not going to raise any more. And I always get the last two words in, yes ma'am, because I don't like the smell. And they are, they do smell. A pig's digestive tract and a lot of what they eat is very much like ours. Does that answer your question why the manure smells?
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Oh, okay, enough.
All right. When you come to, to horses, or in this case, when you're talking about these minis, I'll be honest, I don't have a whole lot of experience with these quote-unquote minis. I spent a lifetime trying to breed economical animals in cattle and horses, and these minis are pets. They have no economic importance, other than me selling you who wants to have a mini, a mini.
Right.
Just like miniature cattle have no economic importance. And I can tell you, there's a lot of people who disagree with me on that, but if you take one of the minis and you take it to a livestock auction, you will walk away from there owing them money for yardage because nobody wants them.
That, any other question, because the caller just ran for your three minutes.
Oh, I only get three minutes, all right. Okay, well, thank you.
Appreciate it. Public comments still open? Please.
Hi, Mindy Gibson, 110 Sherwood Avenue. I have been a backyard, backyard chicken person. I did live on Lake Washington, we did have five acres wooded, we had about six chickens or so. My, my whole experience with them was like, I can't, the only, the only negative thing I can say is the owls and, and possums, which are everywhere, and it doesn't matter what you have in your yard, you're going to have possums. So chickens aren't going to bring anything to your house that you're not already seeing. As far as the rats go, I've never seen a rat. We did have our food closed up, and we clean our chicken coop once every two weeks, but mine's free ranged, so they weren't cooped up, they actually just ran wherever. And, I mean, the eggs are awesome, you know where your food's coming from. I mean, that's like a huge thing. You talk about sustainability, and, you know, we're all worried about what we're eating. I know what my chickens ate, and I know where my eggs are coming from. And if you've ever had a fresh chicken egg that's never been refrigerated or washed right after, you will never want to go to the grocery store and buy an egg again. It's amazing, they're delicious, you can get them in different colors, and they're, my kids carry them around and cuddle them, and they, they loved them. And there's really, they are pets, but they give you food. And really, I can't think of a bad thing that I could ever say come from it. The rats, I mean, fruit trees. Rats eat fruit, you know what I mean? I have fruit trees, you know? We see more possums and rats going across the wall, heading over to my neighbor's yard because he's got a yard full of fruit trees, which is sustainable as well. So that concern, I think, is not a big deal. And I don't think every person in Satellite Beach is going to have chickens. You're not going to have so many that there's going to be like a million rats running around. I think it's just, anyway, that's just my point I wanted to make.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Floor still open?
Christina Conan, 721 Hibiscus. I grew up in San Diego, and my first pet at two and a half was a chicken. I carried it around, and it had a name, and when I was a teenager, I had a chicken that went on my bicycle when we were three blocks from the beach. I rode a skateboard with a chicken on my arm. If you go and you garden, they help you. We never use pesticides in our yard. They ate all the bugs. When they go to roost at night, you bring in all the food and keep it sealed. Never had a problem with rodents. I have been a part of the 4H Rent a Chick program, and I've taken little baby chicks and raised them up, and I've then gave them over to the coop. When we moved to Satellite Beach, I was so hoping I could have one or two chickens in my backyard, not have to use pesticides, have fresh eggs, they eat leftovers, they have a lower green carbon than a dog or a cat, they're quieter than a dog, probably quieter than most children.
That I can assure you.
I can assure you, they're. Anyway, I would love to see this ordinance pass. I think there are enough people out there that are responsible pet owners, and whether they want to have a little cozy lap chicken or a bike chicken, I, I think there's a real need for breeding friendly pets that eat your leftovers, eat your bugs, and give you fresh eggs. And the food is so expensive. If you buy organic chicken food, you're going to lock it up. Nothing is going to get to that food. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Floor still open? Back to council. Question I'd like to ask, because rodents and all of this, I grew up here, and there was always those things around, no matter what. I mean, even, we don't have them, there's rats, there's owls, there's nature's out there. Food storage, does the other communities that have ordinance and allows this brokerage, is there a food store, is there a part of this ordinance that requires a certain type of food storage?
I'll be honest, I don't, I don't remember whether there's something in that particular ordinance or not, but I probably tidied the water here tonight by even bringing up the situation that you could have, if you don't take care of your feed properly, and you don't clean up, that you could have a rodent problem. That, that goes, cats, dogs, whatever, you know, I mean, it's, it's not unique to, to chickens. Matter of fact, it's probably less with chickens because they don't like it near as well as they like dog food. And if you really want to catch a raccoon, don't use chicken food for bait, use dog food because the raccoon's going to be there for the dog food or the cat food.
Any further questions?
No, but I will add, Mayor, I so happen to have here a very nice picture of a rat that my cat brought in from my yard, and I have no chickens. I also have a six-foot concrete wall that goes around my yard, and my yard is totally fenced in. So this will, and my cats do not run outside, they stay within the confines of my total wall, total fenced-in yard, and my cat brought that into my house. So chickens or no chickens, you're absolutely right. There are rats here. I do not have dog, cat food outside, but within the confines of my yard, that was brought in a few weeks ago. So I tend to echo the statement that whether you have chickens and whether you had feed or not out there, you're susceptible to have a rodent or a rat problem as well as anybody else. And like I said, as anybody else. And like I said, I can, I have proof of that happening, and I am only of a block from here. So, I, I would tend to echo those statements. I think you can have that issue, whether you have chickens or don't have chickens, whether you have feed or don't have feed, because I can see it today, right now, without any of that taking place.
Mayor, I have a question. Can you check with us on Rockwood and some of the other ordinances before we, you know, as we're writing it, if they do?
Oh, absolutely. I know there are some that do require food enclosures. So, um, but there's some cities that just haven't thought of it, maybe. Um, but we'll give you some parallels of other communities and what they require from the table.
If there's an issue, and we can approach the issue and find a solution-
Sure.
-then I'd rather do that-
Sure.
-than be a negative and not do anything.
Yeah.
And, and just, just to be clear on the food storage that I'm talking about, I'm talking about put them in a metal can, not in a plastic can, because rats will eat through the plastic can very readily.
Like squirrel garbage, too.
And squirrels are the same way. I mean, squirrel's just a fluffy-tailed rat.
I have a quick question for, um, do you know of any, because I know there's some communities here in Florida that have had chicken ordinances for maybe 10 years or so. Do you know of any communities that have had the chicken ordinances for a while? Have they moved on to accept other types of farm animals as in their ordinances that you know of?
Well, once again, I can only give you what I know to be true-
Sure.
-and, and I do not know of one.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean it hasn't happened. I'm just not aware of it.
Okay.
Can I follow up with one, one question about that? Have you known any municipalities that had a chicken ordinance and allowed it and revoked it or changed their mind or decided no longer to do that?
I do not. The only, the only ordinance I know, even in Brevard County, that was debated but not adopted, was in the city of Titusville. And that was on, I believe, a three to two vote.
That's correct. I was there. And it was for reasons that have nothing to do with really the chickens themselves. It was more of a fear for some of the neighborhoods there that some, use some of the animals for other purposes than pets.
All right. Any further discussion from council? Joe, thank you very, very much. We appreciate your time, and, um, thank you.
If you have any other questions, you know my email address, you got my phone number.
I'm sure we'll be contacting you in this process. Thank you. Um, any further discussion? Thank you, I think.
I hope that was helpful to precede the ordinance as we get further.
Please.
You know, I, I think it was great that we had this discussion, and I'm glad that we moved forward on this. You know, I think the big thing that, you know, if we're gonna move forward on this, I think we need to educate our residents as best we can, because you're still going to get those people who don't understand it, and I don't know how we-
Well, here was what I said, just, sorry to interrupt you. What I'd ask you, through this process, when we come to it, would Joe be willing to come back that night that we do it? Because to me, as we've always said, education is very important. If we can educate the people on it, we can answer their questions or their doubts, I think we're better off doing it that way.
Thank you very much for coming out. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Fine. Everybody good? Okay. Okay, thank you. Moving on to real agenda eight, discuss, take action on the approval of the agreement with the Florida Institute of Technology. Thanks, you're color eight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I love that hat.
[laughing]
I want to create a sustainability plan. Courtney?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, as you recall, we have already have one agreement with Florida Institute of Technology for one intern to do the assessment part of the sustainability plan. And as we're starting to, um, get into that assessment, we now want to hire the intern, another intern, to combine forces to kind of do the planning part of it. Um, so, you did approve a budget up to 15,000. So far, we've approved five, and this would be another five, so it'd still be under your budget.
Okay, so it's not in addition to the 15, it's part of?
No, it's part of the 15, yes. Yeah, so this would be, um, but we are expanding the scope of the project, so I wanted to make sure that, that you, you approve that. So, you can see that's the attached scope. Um, the project would begin March 28th and be completed by August 31st.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Florida FIT to create a sustainability plan for the city with a $5,000 budget from the recycling fund. Second?
A motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Osmer. Further discussion from council? Here and none, open up for public comment? Here and none, back to council. Any further, council? The norm?
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cuttino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to a giant, agenda item 10, excuse me. Uh, agenda items for our next council meeting. Please look them over. Any additions to them? Please, um, see Courtney on it. Um, moving on to agenda item 11, adoption of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the council workshop meeting minutes as submitted, and the council, um, regular meeting from March 2nd as submitted also. Second?
A motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Osmer. Further discussion on the minutes? Here and none, going on?
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cuttino?
Yes, motion passes. Any further business before council? Here and none. Thank you, staff. Meeting adjourned.